Senior citizen now convinced this public in confirmation hearing. Public hearing notices were given to the media, first notice on Friday, March 3rd, 2017, second notice on Wednesday, March 8th, 2017. For the record, today's Monday, March 13th, 2017, and the time now is 2:06 PM. The committee will hear and accept testimonies, both oral and written, on the following. The executive appointment of Mr. Ray C. Tahaji to serve as physician assistant representative to the Guam Board of Allied Health Examiners. Bill 1-34, it's relative to health insurance coverage for prostate and cervical cancer screening. Bill 2-34, relative to health insurance coverage for colorectal cancer examinations and laboratory tests. Bill 16, which is relative to mandating the provision of healthcare insurance coverage for autism spectrum disorders by insurers. This act to be known as Hunter's Law of 2017. I'd like to acknowledge the senators present with me this afternoon, starting with Vice Speaker Theresa Terlahi. Thank you, Vice Speaker. Senator Regina Bisco-Lee, Senator Telina Nelson, Senator Will Castro, and Senator Luis Munya. Thank you very much for being here this afternoon. We're gonna start, we're gonna kinda rearrange the agenda this afternoon and start off with Bill 16-34. I'd like to call up to the front here. If you wish to testify as I call your name, please come forward. If you're just here just to sign in and ensure that your testimony in favor or opposition, it's duly noted once you have signed in. So Ms. Teresa Cruz-Blos, Flo Usan, Mrs. Mary Jill Titino, Duane Titino, Julie B. Cruz, Wesley Mabini, Tanya Duennas, Xenia Duennas, Kelsey De La Cruz, and Dr. Vincent Duennas. If you wish to testify, please come forward. Just a brief description of what Bill 16 does as the primary sponsor of this piece of legislation. You all recall last year, last term, we passed a measure that starts the process of getting an autism center established on Guam. We are in the process of getting a piece of property in Upper Tuman, which is under the jurisdiction of DICED and Chavora Land Trust Commission, to get that piece of property developed so the proceeds of that property can be used to build the one-stop DICED center. And also, within that facility, as the public law had stated, would be to establish Guam's first autism center. The purpose of that is to ensure that we are able to provide services and treatment that are not available now to families with ASD, to be able to start bringing those treatments and services available here on Guam. I wanna thank Dr. Duennas' family and the namesake of this piece of legislation, if it does become law, which is Hunter, who's here with us this afternoon as well. So Hunter, thank you very much for being here. Okay, so this bill, what it does is ensure that health insurance coverage for the treatment and therapy and the services for ASD are covered in the health insurance coverages that are offered in our community. And so I'd like to now ask Dr. Duennas to please go ahead and present your testimony.
Good afternoon, senators. My name's Dr. Vinnie Duennas. I'm an internal medicine physician practicing here on Guam, as well as the co-founder of Hunter Speaks Autism Organization. I'll be providing testimony today in favor of Bill 16, Hunter's Law, again, which was inspired by my five-year-old boy Hunter diagnosed with autism at age two. The United States Department of Agriculture estimates the average yearly cost of raising a typical child to be between $12,800 and $14,970. That equates to roughly $176,000 to $245,000 lifetime. Families living with autism spectrum disorder can expect to spend an additional $17,000 per child per year for autism-related healthcare expenses and education, according to Harvard researchers. Families living with ASD inherit an average lifetime cost of $1.4 million per child. If associated with intellectual disability, that number could rise to $2.3 million per child. Total autism-related economic costs in the United States for the year 2015 was roughly $268 billion. That number could top $1 trillion by 2025 if prevalence rates continue to rise, far exceeding diabetes, ADHD, stroke, and hypertension. Direct costs include special education services, adult care programs, physician and therapist visits, hospitalization, medication, and paid caregivers. Indirect costs include lost productivity, specifically wages and benefits for both those who have autism, as well as their family caregivers who often must quit their jobs. The economic burden associated with ASD is substantial and can be measured across multiple sectors of our society. The largest chunk of additional costs seems to be related to school-based special education services averaging roughly $8,610 per child per year. Much of autism's lifetime costs seem to be associated with adulthood, primarily housing, disability support, and lost productivity. This information makes it clear how important it is to recognize that early intervention for autism can more than pay for itself by reducing the need for special education services throughout the school years, as well as increasing the potential for independence in adulthood. It is crucial that we find ways to promote greater functionality, employment, and quality of life for our autistic children. Research has shown that early detection and aggressive early intervention can make this difference. As much as 10% of children with ASD have made so much progress with this type of intervention that they no longer meet the criteria for the diagnosis. Although results may vary, all children benefit from early intervention services. On Guam, intensive behavioral intervention is non-existent. The American Academy of Pediatrics, the Centers for Disease Control, and the New York State Department of Health all recommend a minimum of 25 to 40 hours per week of intensive behavioral therapy. Guam's children get none. To be effective, treatment must be administered by highly-trained, certified personnel, such as board-certified behavioral analysts, or BCBA's, or registered behavioral technicians, RBT's, under the supervision of a BCBA. Currently, there are no BCBA's or RBT's actively treating autism on Guam. Applied behavioral analysis is the most widely adopted and researched treatment method in the United States, although other effective therapies exist. As of December 2015, 43 states and the District of Columbia have passed mandates, have passed laws mandating insurance companies to pay for such services. Withholding or refusing medically necessary treatment may cause irreparable damage and can lead to detrimental long-term outcomes. Lawsuits have been filed and won in multiple states pertaining to this very issue. Autism is one of the most prevalent and debilitating disorders on the planet. It has been around for almost 80 years now, and still we have nothing to offer our island's kids. It is both shameful and unacceptable. Hunter Speaks organization humbly asks for your support in passing this bill, so that our island's struggling children can finally get the services they so desperately need and deserve. Let's be the voice for those who cannot speak for themselves. Kind regards, Dr. Duennas.
Thank you very much, Dr. Duennas. Before we open it up for any other senator that wishes to make any comments or ask any questions, I wanna thank you for bringing this to the forefront. I know that through your personal experience and your establishing of Hunter Speaks organization has really brought out the tremendous need of our community to be able to, not only for this piece of legislation, but to be able to offer in our community licensed ASD providers, because we really don't have any on Guam. And for those that are able to go off-island, that's something that, of course, is a cost to them and people that, individuals that have the means to do it are able to do it. But maybe that's something you can share with us this afternoon, is some of the efforts that we're doing collaboratively to, as we move towards getting that autism center established, what types of initiatives are happening now to try to bring these providers to Guam and having them train our people here?
And we thank you, Senator, for believing in our mission and helping us with everything you've done throughout our journey. Our organization is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit, again, aimed at improving the standard of care for autism treatment on Guam. Because there are no services here, we have been working tirelessly to try and get the care for our kids, the care that they need and deserve. And so we've been working on multiple projects, first one being Bill 379, which was recently signed into law, as well as the health insurance bill. But through the nonprofit, we have been, because board-certified specialists are so difficult to recruit to Guam, we have established a scholarship program, a graduate-level scholarship program, in order to entice our local educators to wanna pursue this field. It is our hope that by doing so, we'll be able to establish a wealthy pool of behavioral analysts for years to come. In order to provide sustainability for the center, we looked into this health insurance bill as the main source of funding that'll be needed to run the day-to-day operations. A lot of times nonprofits fail because they don't always get the government grants and federal grants they need to survive. And by passing this law, it'll give us, again, a steady revenue stream that'll ensure services for years to come. We have made multiple trips out to Hawaii, coordinating with the autism community in Hawaii, and trying to recruit people to Guam, and trying to collaborate with people in the mainland and to brainstorm on how we can improve the services here. And we've had such a positive response from all our trips. We brought Hunter to Shriners Honolulu just last week for an appointment, and again, to see a pediatric neurologist and the specialist that he needs to see. It's a shame that we had to fly him seven hours to Hawaii for, you know, one-hour appointment. And not all families can do that. But one of his pediatric neurologists, Dr. Ryan Lee, is a local boy in Hawaii. He actually has land on Guam, surprisingly. But he is world-renowned for autism research. He trained out of Johns Hopkins University. Johns Hopkins is where autism was first described in the 1940s. But he is conducting autism research at Shriners, and ADH Research, and other things. But he's showed a strong interest in coming out to Guam to evaluate our kids and to establish telemedicine program to start bringing services that would've been otherwise unobtainable to our children. We've met with one of the main autism centers in Hawaii, autism behavioral consultants, who also show strong interest in our mission. Dr. Amy Wish, who runs the center and runs a successful online program, has agreed to come out to Guam and establish our curriculum and to help run the center once it's established. So there's so many people that wanna come, and not just Hawaii, but people from San Diego. We've been working with Harry Chang and other people in the community to try and, again, improve the standard of care for our island's kids. And it's promising, you know? To see my son go from completely non-verbal at two-years-old to now being able to spell and read and become more independent, that's huge. And that's not by luck, it's from the work that we put in, the work that his teachers put in, and from all the support we've gotten along the way. And we believe that every kid has the potential to be that way. And that's why we feel so strongly about this cause and why we're not gonna give up until it's done. So.
Great. Thank you very much, Dr. Duennas. Vice Speaker, did you have any questions or comments? Or come back? Okay, Senator Lee? Senator Nelson?
The Autism Spectrum Disorder Advisory Task Force, that essentially this bill if passed into law will help facilitate, can you just speak a little bit more about the mission and vision? I mean, I know you gave your personal experience in your testimony. But can you speak about, like, maybe the vision, like, in five years, what you'd like to see?
The vision of our organization, definitely. So we envisioned a comprehensive autism treatment center. To start, we were looking at a 10,000-square-foot facility, a facility that's multifunctional, where we can teach life skills, where we can bring in physical therapists, occupational therapists, speech therapists, as well as autism-specific behavioral therapists, such as BCBA's and RBT's. And most significant results for autism treatment occurs in preschool-aged children, between the ages of three to five, although you can make progress beyond that. But to start, we envision treating a younger age group as early as we can. But again, the recommended treatment is 25 to 40 hours of behavioral therapy a week, and our kids get none. And by building the center, we'll finally get them some of the treatment they deserve. I hope that answers your question.
Senator Munya?
Thank you, Dr. Duennas, for being out here and being the advocate for a lot of the kids. I hold the autism community very close to my heart. I've actually hosted a few of their events, their outreach events. So, and I didn't realize how many people I actually knew that had children who were autistic until I did the events. But I didn't catch the numbers. How many children on Guam have been diagnosed with autism?
On Guam, we have identified over 260 kids in the public school system, ages three to 21, not including those younger, older, those in private school, homeschool, or the countless others waiting to be evaluated. CDC estimates 1 in 68 American children as being on the autism spectrum. Boys are five times more likely to be affected than girls, although a more recent governmental study has predicted that number to increase to 1 in 45. But that has not been officially adopted by the CDC. So compared to other neurodevelopmental disorders, Down Syndrome is 1 in 1,000, Spina Bifida is 0.4 in 1,000, cerebral palsy is 2 in 1,000. We're talking about 1 in 68. So that number is appalling.
Wow, thank you. Thank you so much for your testimony. Thank you.
Vice Speaker Terlahi?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Dr. Duennas, for your testimony, and for all the families here, thank you very much for attending. Could you just describe again, I wasn't able to figure it out, what you meant by that this bill will help to fund the center?
The treatment is a behavioral therapy. It's a medically necessary therapy that can be built, just like cognitive behavioral therapy for depression, or for anxiety, or anything else. But the language in the certain health insurances, not just on Guam, but in the mainland, doesn't specifically specify applied behavioral analysis as a therapy. So if we're able to pass this law and we can bill insurance companies for this service, and we bring into Guam the certified personnel to administer the service, the treatment will be built just like any other bill, or any other disorder treated in a clinical setting. So like, I mean, like a doctor's visit, basically. So the center, although it's an autism treatment center, it'll be run similar to the way a clinic is run.
So would the center be a service provider under this bill?
Yes.
And, but this bill covers medical providers and behavioral health, I mean, behavioral treatment, right?
Right. Board-certified providers, yes.
When it says it requires that the insurance organizations shall maintain an adequate network that includes qualified autism spectrum disorder service providers, what do you envision that to mean?
Well, currently, we have none. We don't have any board-certified behavioral analysts on Guam. We don't have any registered behavioral technicians actively practicing on Guam. So we have, again, established a scholarship program to try and entice people to get into the field. Once we get them here, then we can start billing services and start treating our kids.
So they could not offer you to cover this by sending you to a facility that they want you to go to? Like, it says, this chapter does not require coverage for services provided outside of Guam. You don't want the insurance companies to be allowed to send you off-island instead?
With this type of therapy, it's not, because it's so intensive, it's not possible. It's not like going off-island for a heart stent or for bypass surgery. Forty, 25 to 40 hours of therapy a week requires you to be here. There are people that fly their kids to the mainland to get, you know, evaluated and some treatment, but nowhere near the recommended hours that the American Academy of Pediatrics prefers.
But you're talking about therapy versus diagnoses and other aspects, right? And so, but this bill requires that all of them be provided on Guam?
Not too sure. No?
Yes.
Thank you very much, Vice Speaker. I guess as the author, no, this, your question was, does it require it to be just done on Guam? Well, for the time being, if this is passed now, we don't have any of that available here. The only services that they get here now is through their primary care physicians that perhaps do an initial, I don't know if you call it doctor initial, diagnoses that is not really confirmed until they see a specialist, right? And so what we're trying to do here is be able to have them covered now, while there's no treatments covered here on Guam. But the vision is to ensure that we have these services provided here.
I think it'll work like any other subspecialty that's not offered here on island. I think, I mean, the way it works now is if there is a specialist on island, insurance companies would prefer the patient to stay here and see a specialist here. But if there was any service that wasn't provided here, they would authorize off-island treatment as well.
Okay. All right. So, my other question was, in this section about Guam Medicare Supplement Policies or Certificates, and are there other illnesses that are mandated like this? Or not an illness, but other similar, which, can you compare this to another similar benefit that's provided, or that's mandated?
Can you repeat that quick?
Well, it says that for the, for those entities delivering or issuing for delivering Guam Medicare Supplement Policy Certificates, they shall not exclude this coverage. And I just wanna know, do we require this type of coverage for any other?
Yes.
Yes. Can you give me an example?
Are you talking about just Medicare certification, or?
No, has Guam mandated that, yeah, this type of treatment for other types of, I don't know, illnesses or diagnoses?
I'm not too sure.
Okay.
Yes. Yes, and so, again, as the primary sponsor of the legislation, yes, there are other illnesses that are mandated. I know that, yeah, a few years ago, we passed a measure here that required insurance companies cover blood and blood products. And so that was something prior to that that wasn't covered by insurance companies. Thank you.
Have you considered if you were able to get a provider to, especially the behavioral aspects, to station themselves in the center and provide these services, that if you were just paying that provider, like, full-time, can, versus mandating insurance companies to cover it? I mean, do you, I mean, do we know what that, is there any kind of economic difference?
I mean, if we were to bring in the personnel, we would have no way of funding their services without health insurance. That's like seeing patients for free in a clinic. It would, we wouldn't be sustainable at all. And to treat the amount of kids that we have here with the recommended therapies that associations recommend, it would be impossible. I mean, we could do that, but then we would rely on government funding, which isn't available all the time. And again, with our strategic plan, getting a health insurance bill passed would be the best way to ensure sustainability of the center long-term.
So what do you think the economic impact of this is for the insurance companies, and just for Guam?
I think Senator Rodriguez has done some research on...
Yeah, and you know, we do have our partners from the insurance companies who are here. I don't know if they, and if this is, if you don't wish to provide oral, it's fine. I know they have submitted written testimony. And what the committee is going to do, Vice Speaker, is that, as I do with all bills related to health insurances, have a markup session with stakeholders. And at that point, we can also have additional information be provided. If you can just provide the committee any specific questions, then we'll ensure we get them to provide that during the markup.
Well, thank you very much again, Dr. Duennas and your family. I appreciate all your testimony and your hard work on all your strategic plan. And it sounds like that plan is in good hands. So I thank you for your testimony. Thank you very much.
Can we, if it's not too much to ask, can I have Hunter say a brief message?
Yes, please, absolutely.
Hi, my name is Hunter Duennas. I write this law. I have autism, please support this bill. Thank you.
He said, "Hi, my name is Hunter Duennas. I am five-years-old. I have autism. Please support this bill. Thank you."
Thank you very much, Hunter. And good job. Thank you. Dr. Duennas, Senator Lee did have one more question after you.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Dr. Duennas. Thank you, Hunter. That was wonderful. Great testimony. I appreciate it. So thank you very much for your testimony and your advocacy on this issue. And I also wanna thank the families who are here today in support of this bill. I had two quick questions about it. According to Autism Speaks, in their research on implementation and the cost association associated with ASD insurance coverage, the average cost of coverage is 15 cents to 31 cents per member, per month, in the first couple years of implementation. And granted, this is, you know, in the States, so it might be a little bit different here on Guam. And I know that, I see that some of the insurance providers had provided written testimony about additional costs to cover this. And in Calvo Sulecare's written testimony, they state that they're supportive of the objective of the law, and they just want to ensure that everyone's aware of the additional cost associated with this legislation. So I just wanted to ask you, Dr. Duennas, despite the high occurrence of ASD here on Guam and nationally, do you think that this is a reasonable cost for coverage to set a baseline of coverage?
The recommended treatment for autism, again, is 25 to 40 hours of behavioral therapy per week. The $50,000 cap proposed in this bill only pays for about 10 hours of therapy a week. And I know it does... And I know it does affect our companies here, being smaller companies than those in the mainland, and $50,000 is a lot of money. And this bill, this legislation here, is not typical of all mandates across the country. And so, we are not, we are hoping to get an annual cap of $50,000, but we are also open to working with insurance companies to come up with a reasonable solution. And in other states, there are different types of caps. Some states cap it at $35,000, and it's age-dependent, and so, we are trying to get our kids any service that we can give them. Currently, we receive zero, so anything is better than that.
Thank you. To your knowledge, has the government of Guam insurance plans or the negotiating committee included requirements that healthcare cover medically necessary equipment for ASD such as applied behavioral analysis? Are you familiar? Are you aware that government of Guam insurance plans currently cover those?
I think, again, the language is not specific. I think the, they do mention behavioral, I mean, there are certain behavioral therapies that are covered, such as cognitive behavioral therapy and others, but I'm not too certain about specifically ABA therapy. I have been working with Jeff Larson at Take Care Insurance Company, and he, too, agrees that the language is very great and can be interpreted in different ways. And so, we just want to make sure that when we bring certified personal, personnel here, that we are able to bill this type of service.
Thank you. One last question. It's my understanding that certain medical and mental health issues also accompany, frequently accompany autism, so those can include gastrointestinal or GI disorders, seizures, sleep disturbances, ADHD, things of that nature. And it's also my understanding that certain, some of these issues are already covered
Correct.
To a certain extent by the current insurance coverage. So, would you, or, in the meantime, do you think that what is currently covered for these additional issues, is that enough? Or would you, what is your assessment?
Yeah, I believe so. I mean, I know the coexisting mental and physical health issues are adequately covered. You know, it's just, there are certain diagnostic tests that I believe are not covered, such as genetic testing. I know most families, not just on Guam, but even in the mainland, genetic testing is not covered, which sometimes costs about $9,000 out of pocket. Genetic testing may not influence the child's outcome or treatment, certain treatment plans, but it may help evaluate the risk for future pregnancies and the risk for autism in certain families.
I see.
So, I think it may be one important component to consider.
That's very helpful. Thank you so much, Mr. Duñez, or Dr. Duñez, and thank you so much, Mr. Chair, Sisus Massey.
Thank you very much, Senator Lee. Vice Speaker, did you have a, okay, thank you. And so, we'll ensure that we do have a markup session on this bill, so that any additional information that we do receive, anything that we want to revise, we'll be able to do it in this markup session. And I want to thank representatives from Cavill Select Care for being here and providing the testimony, and we'll make sure that you're invited to that markup session as well.
Okay.
Thank you very much, Doc. Are there anyone else that wish to testify? Bill 16, we have Mr. Mark Mindiola. Sir?
[inaudible]. Buenos, in honor of Sir Mark Mindiola. [inaudible]. Honorable Senators, my name is Mark Mindiola, and I'm a parent of a high-functioning autistic child. It's really exciting for me because my son has been transitioning, and he's been transitioning very well. He was riding on a sped bus, and now he's mainstream. He's riding a regular bus. So, it's been working, the system has been working. And one of the reasons why I wanted to come here was to basically testify in support of this bill. I think this is just another option that we parents will have. Oftentimes, many parents have to go out there and seek additional services. We have to go out there on our own to kind of do that, going to University of Guam, getting the assistive technology devices. And unfortunately, some parents don't know about some of the services that are offered out in those areas, but rest assured that, you know, I think this will be an added support for parents out there that, you know, need that option, to exercise that option. So, I'm here to testify on behalf and support of that, and I thank you guys for proposing something like this that, you know, would greatly benefit a good majority of folks out there. And the other thing, too, that I hope that you guys would also consider is trying to get the experts that are, that, we need a lot of professionals out here, speech therapists, occupational therapists. I know in the Department of Education, we're looking at the budget to increase support towards that. I do know that we've proposed to add additional sped school aids to the school system, and so, that's part of our budget submission, is to increase school aids that are for special needs, for children with special needs. And so, I read through the legislation, and I hope that you guys would thoughtfully consider passing it. Sisus Massey, and Viva Mestamor.
Sisus Massey, Mr. Mindiola. Any questions for Mr. Mindiola?
Mr. Mindiola, thank you for your testimony. Just one question, do you, is there a, have you found any insurance company that currently provides this type of coverage?
You know, when I left off island for a couple of years, and my son was diagnosed, misdiagnosed, I should say, and when we came to Guam, I had to take him to see a neurologist just to verify, because I wasn't certain about the type of, you know, disability he had. And, you know, it was just like a basic checkup, you know, that we had for him, so it was kind of covered, but beyond that, I'm not certain most of the stuff we kind of stay on top of in terms of our insurance, but I've never been denied to have services. But working with the school system, it would have came out of pocket if I had an additional types of services that I would need, and my son is, has PDD NOS, which is pervasive developmental disorder, none otherwise specified, and part of his disability is speech, delayed speech. And so, you know, both my wife and our educators, so we had to go out there, we had to seek additional support, and it would be really nice if, you know, I do know that there are professionals out here that have private clinics that could offer that service, and we can basically have that service through our insurance provider. I think that'll be very beneficial where, if they were an approved provider.
Okay, did you, so you did not find that speech-type therapy services were not covered?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm looking at this.
Yeah, sorry.
Go ahead, no.
Just a clarification, yeah, we didn't go beyond what the school offered, Department of Education. I felt it was sufficient enough, but like I said earlier in my testimony, had it been an additional option, I would have exercised that. I would have went and got more help, because as you develop through the school system, of course, the more support at that level would be very beneficial.
Okay, yes, and I heard the doctor's testimony earlier about the earlier ages, like three to five, did you say, right? The age of three to five is also important. Okay, and what about, yeah, I'm looking now at the government's list of what is mandated for the insurance companies, and so, it also includes occupational therapy, but is there any behavioral therapy that's, it's not covered at all under any of those categories that are currently covered? Okay, all right. Yeah, and so, for you, your gap was speech-type?
Yeah, speech therapy and, you know, there's other behavioral issues that, you know, social issues. But, you know, I worked within the school system, met with the sped folks and was able to get some services, but I think above and beyond that, it would be very beneficial, especially if there's practitioners that, I have some relatives who went off island and got their masters in speech, and they wanted to come back here and practice, you know, and open their own private clinics and stuff like that. I think that would also entice some folk, some of these folks to maybe to perhaps come back and provide those types of additional services that is sorely needed here on the island.
So, you, maybe for you and the doctor, are you envisioning that this would bring in, that you'd be able to, like, if you're, what's your priority of specialists to bring in? Would it be somebody that has different types of therapy? Are they able to do that, or is it going to be, we're going to have to bring them in one by one, like speech?
It would be specifically board-certified behavioral analysts and registered behavioral technicians, none of which are practicing on Guam.
Behavioral analysts and board-certified, and then this also provides that they are going to include this in our certification?
Yes, yes.
All right, okay, thank you very much.
Sisus Massey. Thank you, Vice Speaker. Senator Castro?
Good afternoon. I just want to say thank you to Mr. Mindiola for having the courage to come here publicly and share your story. I've known you for 20 years and your children for the past 10, and I also want to thank you, Dr. Duñez, for your personal testimony and sharing your research.
Thank you very much, Senator. Senator Lee?
Buenos, en hofade, Mr. Mindiola. Thank you very much for your testimony, and thank you to your wife also and your entire family for the advocacy that you're doing on behalf of your son and other families who are experiencing life with ASD. My question is about the task force, and you mentioned that you were able to take a look at the bill. On page nine, it, there's one section that reads that "The department shall submit a report of the Autism Spectrum Disorder Advisory Task Force to the Governor, the Speaker, Vela Suturangwahan, the Chairperson of the Committee on Health by December 3, 2017, on which date the task force shall seek to exist." And my question to you and also to Dr. Duñez, if you're able to answer, is, do you feel that this is a task force that should continue on after the December 3 date, perhaps in a smaller capacity, just to ensure that the concerns and the issues of the autism community are being adequately addressed by this government? Is that something that you would support, Mr. Mindiola and Dr. Duñez?
You know, there's a lot of parents out there that do advocate, and sometimes it's, you know, autism doesn't end, you know, there's a whole, I mean, it's a journey, and some of the children that are, and so, the dialogue needs to continue to happen, you know, and I think if anything, if good can come of this task force to continue to improve, I may perhaps make adjustments where they feel is necessary, so that families don't have to feel like they're fighting every day to try and get that type of support or that type of benefit, you know? So, if you ask me, I think, you know, I think, leave it up to the, leave it up to the folks, the experts, to make that decision, and if they require it to be beyond 2017 of that date, then, you know, allow them that flexibility, because you never know, there may be other legislation that they may propose to you folks that will really benefit the families, and so, but I think it's a very great idea just to continue the dialogue.
Yeah, I also agree that it would probably be beneficial to keep the task force long-term. I think one of the main roles of the task force is to make sure that we're making progress with our programs, and because the treatment for autism is so multi-dimensional and constantly changing, I think it'll be an important tool that we could have in terms of treating our community. And again, this is a community effort, and the more help we can get would be the, would be best.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Duñez, and again, thanks to both of you gentlemen and your families. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Senator. And so, just in closing, the, because this, as the language has read, as Senator Lee had mentioned, that the task force, the main purpose of it was to get, as we get the services available on Guam, get this coverage mandated in law, that we work together with those that are tasked to be part of this and build up that structure that we need. And it's, moving forward, we have the Autism Awareness Group of Guam, I don't know if that's the right name, you have Hunter Speak Organization, and you have others, I believe, within the Education Department that have been there and would be the voice and advocates of ASD moving forward, but absolutely, we will definitely take that into consideration as we move this bill forward, to see if, as a way to sustain what we've built and what foundation we are setting, that if this task force needs to be, you know, carried forward, then that's something we'll definitely consider. Again, Sisus Massey, thank you very much for your testimony. We'll move on now to Bill 1. Bill 1 is an act to add a new Section 30, 102 to Chapter 30 to 22 GCA relative to cervical and prostate cancer screening, introduced by Senator Luis Munia. We have a similar measure introduced by the Senator, Bill 2, an act to add Chapter 30 to 22 GCA relative to colorectal cancer screening. And if you wish to provide testimony on either one, I'll go ahead and allow you to make a test, a joint testimony, you can consolidate your testimonies. So, I'd like to call up those that signed up to testify. I don't believe we have anyone who signed up to testify. We do have written testimony from the American Cancer Society, Cancer Action Network, that will be part of the record, and if you do wish to testify, ask you to please come to the table to my left to sign in. At this time, I'd like to recognize Senator Luis Munia to discuss both Bills 1 and 2.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for allowing me to speak on Bill Number 1, and also like to thank those who are here to testify, if they come to testify. I appreciate your time and effort. My comments apply to both Bill Number 1 and its companion bill, Bill Number 2. Both bills address the important issues of cancer screening and health insurance coverage. Under the provisions of the Affordable Care Act, also known as Obamacare, screening for prostate, cervical, and colorectal cancer are covered by health insurance companies and not subject to deductibles or copayments. The importance of this is in the early detection and treatment of cancer not, it cannot be overstated. The American Cancer Society has published a report that of Asian-American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islanders living in the United States, cancer is the leading cause of death. What is at the issue is the promise that President Trump and some members of Congress that have repeatedly made to abolish Obamacare. The American Healthcare Act is quickly making its way through the congressional process even as we speak. The effect of this act on screening is unclear. In the event their promise comes to fruition, I believe that it should become the policy of the government of Guam, that the current provisions of Obamacare relative to cancer screening remain as a matter of Guam law. It is important to note that the provisions of Bill 1 and 2 would go into effect only if the U.S. Preventative Service Task Force, or otherwise known as US PSTF, screening guidelines in the Affordable Care Act are repealed or changed to eliminate covered cancer screening. Health insurance companies provide coverage described in the two bills now. I believe, though, that it is important that they continue to do so despite any change in the Affordable Care Act. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Senator Munia. We also have testimony submitted by Cavill Select Care. Want to thank Mr. Kempilo and Mr. Cavill for being here this afternoon. Is there anyone else that wish to testify besides this? Testimony from the American Cancer Society? Anybody wish to testify? If not, okay, oh, yes. Just for the records, Vice Speaker would like to make a statement?
Not a statement, Mr. Chairman, but thank you. I want to just clarify, does this, are these two bills, it says to add these sections to Chapter 30 of Title 22, but these have to do with like real estate or different things, and I'm just, I want to clarify- same place where we were going to add coverage for the prior bill? The mandate for health insurance companies, right?
Thank you very much, Vice Speaker. So thank you for that question, Vice Speaker. What we'll do is we'll work with the author, and just like the other bill, we'll have a markup session and where these issues can be addressed during that time. Yes.
Are these currently covered under the Guam Health Insurance?
Yes, yes. As a matter of fact, we have met with some of the health insurance companies, and they are currently covered. I do want to, for the record, though...
Are they mandated under the Guam Health Insurance?
No, I don't think they're mandated under. They are, they are, okay. Okay, so according to Frank Campillo from the...
Yes.
I do want to make for the record, though, that the copies of the bills that we have here on the table now is, has been corrected. These are the current copies now, so the bills that we have here, this was done on January 3. We also, we have the corrected bills here, the copy of it as corrected by the prime sponsor on February 27. So I just want to, for the record, I want you to...
Okay, thank you very much, Senator, so we'll review those and take all the other recommendations into consideration. Okay, so public hearing has been called for Bill 1 and 2. For those in the community that wish to provide written testimony, can do so by sending an email to my office or having a written testimony delivered here to the Guam Legislature. And next on the agenda is the executive appointment of Mr. Ray C. Tahaji to serve as a physician-assistant representative to the Guam Board of Allied Health Examiners. Mr. Tahaji, I'd like to invite you to come forward. Thank you very much, Mr. Tahaji, for being here.
Hafadeh, Senators.
We've been, since last year, since last term, been trying to schedule your confirmation hearing. I know you've been busy, and so I'm happy that we're finally here today to hear your confirmation hearing. So you may open up with any testimony you wish to provide the committee.
I don't have any testimony. I'm just happy to be here, and I thank you folks for allowing me to be here and to be an opportu, to provide an opportunity to Guam, to sit as a member of the Guam Allied Health Board.
Thank you. Mr. Tahaji, has the governor's office or anyone from the board have reached out to you since your first appointment last term to provide you any orientation or any information on the responsibilities that's needed to, that you're required to be able to carry out as a member of the board?
Yes, Dr. Malaja has actually emailed me on the responsibilities of a member.
Okay, great. And I, I'm not sure if how often they have a meeting, I think it's once a month, right? Is that your understanding as well?
Yes, sir. So once a month on a Friday, 12 noon, usually lasts about an hour and a half, is what I'm told.
Okay, so currently, Mr. Tahaji, you are employed at the Guam National, Guam Army National Guard, is that correct?
That's correct, sir.
Okay, so I just want to ensure, because I know that this board is a very busy board, there's so many disciplines under this board, that as, you know, although you be a physician-assistant representative, what will come before you are issues, licensure applications for all the other disciplines within the board, and so we just want to ensure that, you know, you have the time, of course, and the energy, because you're a very busy man over at the guard, and so want to ensure that you're able to dedicate that same time to the board.
I should be able to.
Okay, great. I'll open the floor to any other senator that wish to ask any questions. Vice Speaker?
Hafadeh, Mr. Tahaji, just want to say thank you for agreeing to serve in this capacity. I see you've worked at the government, at the Guam Memorial Hospital for several years, and thank you for that, and that you've worked at U.S. Navy and now the Guam Army National Guard. So I have no question that you are qualified, and yeah, my concern would only be that, yes, if you're able to attend those meetings, and hopefully if they're scheduled and regular, then hopefully you'll be able to meet that, and I just wanted to say thank you again. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Vice Speaker. Senator Nelson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good afternoon, Mr. Tahaji, how are you doing?
I'm doing good. How are you doing, Senator?
I'm very glad that you accept, you are open to accept this appointment. I do have, you know, some questions to kind of see your perspective on your contribution to the allied board. So I know you don't have any testimony, but can you just please elaborate on your experience and your knowledge, and what you can bring to the table to help the allied board help move forward and progress in different areas? Some of the things that they're doing now, and how we can improve, especially as a legislative body to assist in this area?
Right. And you know, to be honest with you, I'm, I don't, I'm not really, I don't know too much about what I do if I am appointed. What I do know is that my responsibilities include looking at applications, both initial and relicensing, and just to ensure that the PAs are within standards, that's Guam code standards.
Yes, that's, that's the general function of the board, but is there anything else that you believe that your experience can provide to kind of expand the board's services and matters of the like?
Oh, yeah, definitely. I think what we're lacking here in Guam is collaboration with other physician assistants. So it's my hope that through the Guam Allied Health Board, you know, I can establish some type of group, that we can hopefully get these folks together, and we can discuss current PA issues that may affect the island of Guam, and present it to you folks if it requires addressing, to whether it requires a law or a bill, definitely, that's my hope, basically.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator. Senator Lee?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Mr. Tahaji, for your service and for also answering the governor's call to serve on this board, if confirmed. I share some of the sentiments that the Vice Speaker and Senator Nelson have brought up about your service and your opportunity to make the meetings for the allied board. So thank you for responding to those questions. I also wanted to just ask if you believe that the board needs to address any, any particular concerns from the health community during your term, should you be confirmed? Is there anything outstanding that you want, you would like to contribute to, something really important?
That's a very good question. I think that there are a lot of things that need to be improved in terms of healthcare on Guam. One thing that I'd like to see change really is with physician assistants, at this point, they require supervision, so a preceptor, and that's, some states, they have it where PAs do not require supervisions like nurse practitioners do, so, or don't rather. So that's one of the, one of the biggest things I'd like to see change.
Okay, so just expanded, expand the role of physician's assistants here on Guam?
Well, not so much the role, but the, PAs are required to have some form of either direct or indirect supervision, depending on what state or territory you work out of.
Right.
So in Guam's case, it's more of an indirect supervision. So what I'd like to see is, at some point, see that change where, you know, the PAs have a little bit more autonomy, similar to the nurse practitioners.
And I know you were stating that you're not completely familiar with some of the other things that the board does, but I wanted to see if you're aware of any continuing education requirements for specific professions within the health field, and do you feel that the continuing education requirements for physician's assistants is adequate?
Yeah, I think, I think it's more than adequate, and in fact, Guam requires about 50 CMEs. The NCCPA, which is the National PA Association, it requires about 100, and that's every two years, so, yeah, I think it's more than adequate.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Tahaji, and thank you, Mr. Chair.
So, Mr. Tahaji, you don't have a problem to, like, when the discipline, discipline proceedings come before you, to be objective in disciplining your colleagues or others in the health profession, because I think this board is a mixture, right, of allied health professionals?
That's correct. Yeah, I don't think I have a problem with that, ma'am.
All right, just want to put it on the record. Thank you very much, Mr. Tahaji.
You're welcome.
Thank you. There's no other senator wish to ask any questions, but I want to ask your thoughts, Mr. Tahaji, on, several years ago, there was a move to move the physician assistants under the medical, the Board of Medical Examiners, the physicians. Is that, I want to know, you know, how you think and what is your take on that?
Hmm.
Or is it appropriately in the allied health?
I think it's where it should be, because, you know, the PA profession is actually an allied health profession, and not so much, it doesn't really fall in the Guam Medical Board, really.
Okay. And so in your, I've noticed that you've also served as PA in other jurisdictions, and so has it always been under the jurisdiction of a allied health board in those locations as well?
That's correct, sir.
Okay, okay. If there's no other questions, we finally had your confirmation hearing, so we'll work now to move on getting the committee report completed and filed. But if there's anyone else that wishes to provide written testimony, and you're also free to submit a written statement or any supporting testimony from anyone else, you're welcome to do that and provide it to the committee as well, okay?
Okay.
Thank you very much, sir.
And thank you very much.
Okay, the time now, the committee has exhausted all on the agenda. The time now is 3:08. This public hearing is adjourned. Thank you.